This monthly meeting of the Cobb Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, for those who don't know, is an advisory panel appointed by the Board of Commissioners. We examine every zoning request, land use permit and so forth that comes into the county, and we'll make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. The final decision and the binding decision, though, rests with the Board of Commissioners, and they will hear these cases at their regular meeting, which is generally two weeks after this one, and that would be on November 17th. So if you're here for a case today, you'll need to come back on the 17th for the Board of Commissioner hearing. It's our custom to invite various members of the local clergy to come to our meetings and open our sessions with a few comments or a prayer, and it's my pleasure at this time to introduce to you Chaplain Brad Ferentz. Brad is the chaplain of Police Precinct 4. He also serves as Minister of Education and Outreach at Shiloh Hills Baptist Church in Kennesaw. We're glad to have him here today. When he finishes his comments, we'll ask Officer Ott to come forward and lead us in our pledge of allegiance. When you see him come to the middle of the room, if you'll stand as you're able, we'd appreciate that. Brad?
Thank you, Father, for your great love to us, the way that you take care of us and bless in our lives. We ask, Father, that you would give wisdom to those that will be making decisions that will change lives here in this room this morning. We ask that you'd give, like I said, wisdom and understanding, that you'd bless and take care of them. Help us to please you, Father, in all that we do. Father, I also pray for Detective Lopez and the passing of his daughter this weekend. We ask that you'd watch over that family and take care of them also. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda this morning, as usual, is our consent agenda. These are cases that the Planning Commission and the zoning staff have investigated and were satisfied that all the pertinent issues have been resolved and for which there is no known opposition. The zoning administrator, Mr. John Peterson, who's raising his hand right over here, will read these cases on the consent agenda into the record. He'll ask you if there's any one present that's in opposition to the case or wishing to make a comment on that case. If there is, we may elect to pull it from the consent agenda, and then we would hear that case in its regular numerical sequence. Next, we will hear any held or continued cases from previous meetings, previous hearings. And lastly, we will hear all of our regular cases again in their numerical sequence. Applicants will be asked to identify themselves, to come forward, and to be sworn in before they present their case. Then the opposition likewise will be asked to identify themselves, be counted for the record, be sworn in, and give their testimony. When your case number is called, if you wish to address the board, you'll be asked to come forward to be sworn in by our officer of the day, Mr. Jason Campbell, on the front row here. Jason, raise your hand. So present yourself to him, and Jason will take care of that. He'll ask you to sign his sign-in sheet, and that's so we get the correct spelling of your name for our record. Most important thing I can tell you, I say this every time, and we still seem to get it wrong, so we need to be sure that everyone understands that each side presenting this morning gets 10 minutes collectively to present your case. That's not 10 minutes per person, that's 10 minutes collectively. So just be mindful of that and mindful of the length of your comments, so we can hear as many people as possible for each case. And remember, as you speak, at that time, there's no rebuttal process. That's not your time to question us or to question the applicant, that's your time just to present your case. We may, however, call you back up, so that you can answer specific questions and so forth, but no rebuttal when you're first presenting your case. Mr. Peterson, any other directions for us this morning?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are three cases on today's printed agenda, which have been continued by the staff, will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-87, Fuqua Acquisitions II LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the December 1st Planning Commission zoning hearing. Rezoning case Z-95, Racetrack Petroleum, Inc. That case was continued by the staff until the December 1st Planning Commissioner zoning hearing. And lastly, SLEP 9, Southern Link Wireless. That case was continued by the staff until the December 1st Planning Commission zoning hearing. I would like to ask people in today's audience, please turn your cellphones off or put them on silent. The ringing does interfere with the broadcasting presentation, so if you have a cellphone, please put it on silent mode. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay, go ahead, John, please.
Did you want to continue Z-80? Let's do it right now. Mr. Chairman, the applicant for rezoning case Z-80, the Church of the Pentecost USA Incorporated, needs to continue their case for one more cycle. They continue to work on their plan, and we would ask the Planning Commissioners to continue this case until your December 1st zoning hearing.
This is yours. You have any comments on that?
Yeah, they're waiting on the surveyor to provide an updated survey, then their landscape architect's going to take that updated survey and put together a landscape plan. So I think it makes sense to continue it one more month. I did stress to him that we definitely want to hear it next month, so he needs to make sure all these people are getting things done in a timely fashion. But I'll make a motion that we continue Z-80 till our December hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to continue Z-80. We have a second from Skip. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? So Z-80, the Church of Pentecost, will be delayed to December. Okay, John, what else?
Thank you. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay.
Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for November 3rd, 2015. Rezoning case Z-93, R-E and G Property Management LLC. Request rezoning from R-20 to LLC for the purpose of offices, and Land Lot 277 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Patmail Road, east of Dink Lane. Staff recommends deletion to the LRO zoning district, subject to the following conditions: professional office use only, allowance of variances as stated in the zoning comments, no more than two suites tenants can occupy the building at the same time, site plan received by the zoning division on August 10th, 2015, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations, and owner developer to enter into a development agreement pursuant to OCGA 367113 for dedication of system improvements to mitigate traffic concerns. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-93? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-96, Kevin Obarski, request rezoning from R-30 and GC to R-30 for the purpose of single-family houses, in Land Lot 1019 and 1020 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Cochise Drive, north of Paces Ferry Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions: site plan received September 22nd, 2015, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications; single-family residential use only, as per the Cobb County Code; both lots to be combined into one lot prior to permitting; fire department comments and recommendations; water and sewer division comments and recommendations; store board management division comments and recommendations; and Cobb DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Let the record show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-96? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. SLEP 10, ALM Kennesaw LLC, request a special land use permit for the purpose of previously owned car sales, in Land Lot 172 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Barrett Lakes Boulevard, south of Cobb Place Boulevard. Staff recommends approval, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on September 3rd, 2015, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Letter from Mr. Garvis L. Samms Jr., dated October 21st, 2015, store board management division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP 10? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, let me just run down the list here real quick. Z-93 Gaunt, any comments on that one? Skip, I know you had one. SLEP 10, you had a comment, I believe, on that one.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd just like to add one stipulation, one additional stipulation, that there are no vehicle repairs or inoperable vehicles outside of enclosed spaces.
Okay, so we're adding that as an added step, right?
That's correct, an added stipulation.
Okay, and I do have a question. Z-96 was my case, it's in District 2. John, I want some clarification, because we had comments, questions actually, by a couple of people about the ARC's involvement on this site. This site is on the Chattahoochee River, fairly flat and level at this point, but at what point does the ARC get involved, because this is in the flood plain?
If they were going to get involved, Mr. Chairman, it would be prior to them obtaining a building permit. And Mr. Braden could probably answer that question a lot better than I could, but they may or may not get involved, depending on what the scope of work is.
Was it your understanding that the house was to be built on filter, land buildup?
It's going to be mounted up, yeah.
If that's done, I understand the ARC does not need to be involved, is that right?
Possibly not.
Well, he said at the work session that it's already been approved by the ARC.
Well, if it's built on, if it's built on the land as it exists now, I think the ARC does get involved, is that right?
Yeah. That's what he told us in the work session.
Let's call Mr. Braden up here. He's the expert on stormwater issues.
I think this is worth looking at. When we had the big flood a few years ago, this particular area of Cobb County had some very serious flooding. It was six and eight feet deep, right where this house is going to be built. When that happens, the Atlanta Regional Commission always gets involved when the land is redeveloped. So tell us your name and clarify that for us.
Dave Braden with Stormwater Management, yes, to clarify that issue, actually, the ARC's only concern is with the clearing and impervious coverage on that parcel within the river quarter. The construction and elevation of the structure is Cobb County's flood damage prevention ordinance is what dictates that. So really, really two things, but they're really close to being able to not, we probably will not have to submit to ARC, because they're going to be using what we call a non-substantial change and have no increasing impervious coverage over what was out there already. If they do go over that, then we probably would need to submit to ARC.
Okay, so we're probably okay with the ARC.
But the elevation of the structure will be predicated upon our stormwater prevention ordinance.
Well, this will be a nice new addition to that neighborhood. There's some beautiful homes there. I think this is going to be quite a nice addition, a large, expensive home, so I think we're good to go. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Dave or John? Okay, we're, oh, she wants a step that we get a tour of the house once it's done. Can we arrange that, gentlemen? Okay, I don't think we'll add that in. Okay, so that, it's already added in?
It's already added.
Okay, well, we didn't vote on that, so good luck with that, though. So that concludes our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion. We approve it as amended.
Okay. Second from Christie, all in favor? So consent agenda's approved. Thank you very much. What's next, John?
All those on the consent agenda, please come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioner zoning hearing. Next, Mr. Chairman, is rezoning case Z-94, Mike Dillon, who requests a rezoning from R-80 to LRO for the purpose of a professional office, in Land Lot 428 of the 19th District. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Macklin Road and Villa Ricka Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-94? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman.
Whenever you're ready, sir.
Thank you, sir. We're members of the Planning Commission. My name's Garvis Samms. I'm with the law firm of Samms, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bailey, and I represent the applicant, Mike Dillon. He and his wife are here today, Mr. and Mrs. Dillon. Also, we have Mr. David Meyer, DGM Land Planning Consultants with us as well, from a land planning, architectural perspective. So if you've got any questions, and the three of us, I guess that actually makes four, the four of us will be able to respond to any questions at the appropriate time. For those of you who've lived in Cobb County for an extended length of time, or for those of you who've lived in Cobb County your entire life, like I have, then you're familiar with how Macklin Road corridor has evolved over the years. It's been, it's been really interested or interesting. It's gone from a two-lane country road to, of course, a multi-lane, in some instances, median divided, major arterial carrying excess of 30,000 cars a day. So it's, it's really changed. In 1987, the property at issue is being shown here, the subject property, 1987, the local attorney, L.S. Cobb, bought this property for he and his wife and lived there until their deaths just a few years ago. And even at that time, when they moved in, there were maybe two commercial areas. It was Michael's Trading Post, as you're going back towards Powder Springs, Powder Springs Road, and then there was the Varner Hardware Store. And then there were a smattering of churches, and then that's all there was in 1987. And then as things began to change and populations began to expand and residential areas out there began to build up, the road went through an evolutionary progress as well, and operational changes, widening, the whole works. So what you're seeing right now on your monitors, this is an aerial photograph that, of course, you can see the property is outlined in blue, as you see right here, at the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Villa Ricka Road and Macklin Road. What you've got on the other side here, this is a 45-acre tract of land. It came up before you, I believe, as a planning commission for a special land use permit. That was ultimately abandoned, and I believe the property owners have gone forth and they've gotten approval for a public park on this site. Be a massive West Cobb Sports Complex. Whether it happens or not, I don't know, I can't, I can't tell you, but that's what's being looked at now there. This is a Ryland subdivision, Woodland Chase, that I rezoned probably eight years ago, that's an R, either R-15 or R-20 OSC. You've got the extension of McKeachran Church here, with McKeachran Memorial Athletic Fields. And then this is a property, Mays Ward Dobbins Funeral Home. This was rezoned to the LRO classification, and I brought it back for other business, for the funeral home, back, I believe, in 2009. So that gives you an idea of what's in the area. You go further west and you run into more churches with associated cemeteries and daycare and other activities. You go in this direction, immediately contiguous into the east of Wood Chase subdivision, is the West Cobb Aquatic Center. So you can see the changes that have taken place have been, have been massive, at least in terms of this intersection, this corridor, going from Villa Ricka, Macklin Road, back towards Macklin Road's intersection with Lost Mountain. But while this corridor's changed, this particular piece of property is 2.85 acres, it hadn't changed one whit. I mean, the house has been there, the trees have been there, the driveways have been the same, the points of ingress and egress haven't changed. And that's what we're proposing today. We're simply asking that the use be changed, so that Mr. and Mrs. Dillon can run the Dillon Insurance Agency from the site. And I've explained to you how that works in terms of my stipulation later, I'll go over a couple of those, but what my clients are actually seeking is a rezoning from R-80, which is what the property is presently zoned now, to R-80 and LRO. This is split zoning, and this is specifically, solely, exclusively for the purposes of the Dillon's insurance agency on the, on the site. I'll put up the site plan, so you can see that. This is, you'll see on your monitors, this is the original site plan. The site plan is pending before you. We actually have a revised site plan, but we, we got it a little bit too late to submit it in time for consideration of this hearing. The only thing it does is take away a few of the parking spaces, because as it turned out, where we originally had the parking laid out, it was over the septic field, and that's, of course, not, not allowable. But the parking we do have is all pervious pavers, so we are staying way under the threshold of 5,000 square feet in terms of land disturbance on the, on the property. And 5,000 is the threshold that would kick you into having to do detention and water quality and those type of things. When this application was filed, almost immediately, or certainly within a week, I contacted representatives of plan, people looking after neighborhoods, because I knew that they had area connections with residents who had been very vocal with the West Cobb Sports Complex when it came up as a slop. They'd been very vocal and involved with the funeral home in terms of hydrological considerations. And so we've had a dialogue from the very beginning with plan and lately with area residents as well regarding this. And what we have today, I think, is a situation where staff has been extremely helpful. They're constrained to follow the dictation of the future land use map, but they, they've been extremely helpful in allowing us to craft a proposal that we think is historically accurate, aesthetically pleasing, and probably innocuous, as innocuous as any non-residential use could be on the property with the office use. In that regard, we submitted two step letters. The first one was August 14th, the next one is August the 19th. The August 19th letter supersedes the 14th letter. It's based on conversations with plan, conversations with area residents, with staff, also with Mr. Gunther and other members of the Planning Commission, with whom we have spoken. This is going to be a rezoning specifically, exclusively for the Dillon Insurance Agency. We've excluded all other uses under the LRO classification, so if this use ceases, then a subsequent use would have to come back through the rezoning process. We've also agreed, if you're looking at the site plan, or if you were looking at, the back 100 feet of the property, that would be the north 100 feet of the property, is going to remain in the R-80 classification. So that would allow a buffer for the residential areas and sort of a cutoff or transition, if you will, for a non-residential utilization going norally on Villa Ricka Road. So we'll have that on the property as well. Because of the nature of Mr. Dillon's insurance agency, he actually goes out to his commercial insurers. Very few of them come to his site, but he does have an office there on the site. It'll be from 8 until 6, the operation hours, Monday through Friday, and have a total of about five employees on the, on the site at any, at any given time. Any signage will be ground-based monument-style signage. Any lighting will be environmentally sensitive, low-intensity type lighting. We will agree and have agreed to all the stormwater management recommendations and comments. The average slopes here are from approximately 5% to 10%, and it drains towards the northwest. But as you can see right now, it's served by virtue of sheet flow off the property, and that's the way it'll continue to filter through the woods that are there on the, on the property. We'll be submitting a landscape plan during the plan to be processed. The outside's kind of gotten a little shabby over the years since Mr. and Mrs. Cobb has passed away. So the house will remain the same, but architecturally, on the interior and some on the exterior, they're certainly going to fix it up considerably, and they'll be landscaping on the outside consistent with the landscape plan that we, we submit. We've agreed to all of DOT's recommendations and, of course, all the other staff recommendations, and I won't go through the litany of uses we could have under LRO, but we've excluded every single one of those verbatim. So with that being said, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gunther, and other members of the Planning Commission, we do respectfully request that you recommend to the board that this be approved. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Samms. I know we said there were no opposition members present, but let me just ask again, anyone in opposition to Z-84 wishing to speak? Okay, not seeing and hearing any. It's back to this board. This is in District 1. Mr. Gunther will cover that for us, and he'll lead our discussion. Skip?
Okay. Mr. Samms, if you could come back, I just have a question for you. The revised site plan that you referred to, do you have a copy of that that you could submit and make part of the record today?
I do. I've got it on a hardboard. I'll have to bring a copy back up, since I have, I was going to submit it formally tomorrow, since that would give everyone ample time to look at, but I can show it to you right now if you'd like.
Okay, good. I appreciate that.
You can take the differences between the two.
Yeah.
This is the revised site plan. Mr. Gunther, you know, I did provide you with a PDF of this last Friday, I believe it was. The thing that changes on here is we've reduced the number of parking spaces to seven spaces provided, and we've moved them to this location here, saving the two specimen trees, obviously staying off the drain field that was about in this direction. Also, we're going to have two parks or two spaces within the garage here as well. So we're actually asking for a contemporaneous variance on the parking, but operationally, Mr. Dillon only needs five, and so we've got, we've got seven. That's the only change to the plan.
Okay, and that's dated October 28th, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, just make a statement here, that we definitely want to retain the rural feel of this area to the extent that that's possible. And the last thing we need to do is have this parcel, or any adjacent parcel, developed in a commercial business that creates a lot of additional traffic in this area. Having said that, this home is vacant, it needs repairs, and the proposed use as an insurance, commercial insurance agency office seems to be easily accepted by virtually everybody who's looked at this application. So in this action, what I'd like to do is make sure that we preserve the property with its residential look and feel, and we send a message to the development community that the residential nature of this area needs to be kept intact. So I'm thinking that what we need to do is approve a split zoning of LRO and R-80 for that 100-foot strip that's to the north side of this parcel, and for this use only, for the use as a commercial real estate office, and that we add a reversion clause, which further strengthens the notion that this will have to come back for rezoning should anybody in the future decide that they want, want to have this property be used for another use. And the final set of stipulations would be to retain the current house look and feel with any additions or modifications that might be made, excuse me, over time. So with that having said, and I also want to mention that the only reason we're hearing this, since there is no opposition, is because the staff has been required to make a recommendation of denial, because it doesn't fit the future land use plan of very low-density residential. LRO doesn't. So that's why we're hearing this. So having said that, I'm open for discussion before I make a motion.
I have a question for you, or maybe for Garvis. The back 100 feet, Garvis, is that to remain, you might come back up, is that to remain undisturbed? Are you making any improvements there?
Remain undisturbed.
Okay.
They don't have any plans of landscaping or otherwise. It's woods, and just going to leave it like it is.
Okay.
From a hydrological perspective, for the folks that are to the northwest that have a lake, that, trust me, that is the best for them.
There was a question earlier, Skip, about sidewalk, curb, and gutter.
Yeah, DOT, I think Jane's prepared to come up and talk about that, Jane Strickland, but I don't think it's necessary. You made recommendation in your comments that a sidewalk and curb and gutter be installed with any future redevelopment of this parcel, and you're nodding your head to confirm that. That's my clear understanding, so there's really no reason to, you know, that's, those are requirements for the future, but they're not requirements for this action.
Okay. Only other question is, I know, and Garvis mentioned that there would be some remodeling, renovation work done on the house, but mostly on the interior. Come on back up in just a quick second. Just keep standing there, I think.
I will. I'm glad to.
You need the exercise.
Glad to do that.
Anything on the exterior planned at this point?
There'll be some tweaks, but nothing of any substantive nature, but most of it, the architect's been hired to retrofit and rehab the inside, and Mr. and Mrs. Dillon have actually hired an architect that's looking at that, and I think Mr. Meyer's spoken with her, and I have briefly as well, but mainly on the inside.
With exterior modifications, would you want that to come to the district commissioner for approval, sign-off? Yes, no? Needed?
It's, it's not going to change the residential appearance. It'll just be improvements.
We have, we have your assurance of that, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then we're fine.
I'm not concerned about that.
That's all I had. Anybody else have questions regarding this Gaunt?
I'll just make a clarification, because Skip mentioned real estate office use only, and I believe it's insurance.
It is insurance agency.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure we get that right.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, that's all.
I'm sorry, I have one question. Where does the R-80 start on the map?
On the subject property?
Mm-hmm. That you propose to leave as R-80?
It's the back 100 feet.
Ms. Williams, the R-80 will, this is a call right here, about 229 feet, so the R-80 will be approximately right here, I'd say, just not having a line to demarcate it. I can get, what I can get is Mr. Meyer to show that on this revised site plan. It's a good thing we haven't submitted, so now we can submit it.
Yeah.
And show where the R-80 will remain, but approximately right here, Ms. Williams.
Okay, I think we need to show it just so that they know when they put it on the map exactly how much of it is R-80.
Well, we'll do that, and that'll be part of the revised site plan that we submit. Thank you.
Okay, Christie?
I'm sorry, I just thought of this. If that piece is going to be R-80, will it be subdivided, so that it's a different parcel?
We don't plan to subdivide into different tax parcels, no, ma'am.
Okay.
It'd just be a split zoning.
Okay, because it probably wouldn't be 800, or 80,000 square feet, so that's...
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a non-conforming R-80.
Okay, thanks.
It would, it would be a non-conforming R-80.
If it were subdivided, but it's not.
That's a good point.
Okay.
It's not 80,000 square feet.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need to be sure we make that clear.[1777.83]
I just wanted to, I heard you say that it's a reversion if it's for another use, Skip. Did you mean a rezoning?
Yeah. Reversion clauses are typically tied to the zoning.
Well, either way, since we're limiting it to this use and have eliminated all of the uses under LRO, whether there's a reversion clause or not, it's probably superfluous to have one.
Well, I'm talking about, I'm talking about a reversion clause back to full R-80 status in the event that the use as an insurance office ceases to exist.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify what that was.
And I have wording for that.
Pardon me?
And I have verbiage for that.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have just a little small problem with that one, reversionary, especially with all the limitations of the LRO. I mean, like, would we really care if another office use came in there that was low-key? I don't think we really would care to have it come back or lose its zoning just because another office wanted to move in there. So I would be in favor of removing that with all his steps.
This use only covers it.
Covers everything. And then if it changed use to another office use, then it still would be fine. It's the low-key that we're looking for.
Like if an accountant?
Accountant, yeah. Why would we want it to come back through zoning?
The reason that came up was because we all got, at least I got, I think Skip got, we got a late, last-minute request from Kelly Gambrell, and I don't believe Kelly's here today.
She's not.
From PLAN, asking us to do that. Her verbiage, though, was taken exactly from another zoning in the area, and I'm not sure it fits this.
I don't think so.
So much of what she said was...
Those stipulations, they were shared with me last week by Mr. and Mrs. Galonic that live on the lake. And they are pretty much exactly the same stipulations we entered into with respect to the funeral home back in 2009, and would be pertinent with respect to the hydrological considerations that were applicable to that site, but certainly not to this.
Right, most of them related to stormwater runoff and that sort of thing, and are really not applicable to this, and so I'm not so sure we need that reversion.
The only reason I was thinking of a reversion clause was just simply to reinforce the notion that nothing's going to happen on this property other than the proposed use without a rezoning action.
I think you have.
But as long as we're covered without the reversion clause for exactly that situation, then I'm fine with that.
This use only really covers that.
Right.
Am I right, Garvis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. That makes the motion simpler.
Okay, good. Any other comments, questions?
Okay, Tony, you're good.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're ready for me to make a motion?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, I'd like to recommend approval of the application of C-94 to LRO and R-80 subject to the site plan prepared by DGM Land Planning Consultants dated October 28th. That's the plan that is up there now, that will be submitted formally tomorrow.
He's got to add that line, remember.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, remember, we're going to put that line on it, so maybe instead of this plan, maybe the one to be submitted, Mr. Gunther.
All right, so, subject to the site plan to be submitted early this next week, and the Garvis-Samms stipulations letter to Cobb County's zoning division dated October 19th, 2015, with the following changes and additions to that letter. On item number two, replace it with the rezoning of the subject property shall be from... No, I want to retract that. I don't want to make a change to item number two, given our discussion. Item number 10, replace the word "building" shall, or the phrase, "building" shall contain its with existing buildings and any future additions and/or buildings shall contain the, in other words, that's designed to preserve the look and feel of the current architecture. Item number 15, for minor modifications, add the following sub-items. F, allow for any uses other than Mr. Dillon's insurance agency. And G, require a change in the zoning of this parcel either more or less restrictive. And then all staff comments and recommendations as presented, with the exception of the transportation comments regarding the sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, which we discussed. That's my motion.
Second, is it appropriate to see if it would be for consent agenda?
Yes, good idea. And to place this on the BOC consent agenda.
Consent agenda for the BOC?
Yes, for their next meeting.
Okay, we clear on that?
And I'd like to just add a clerk's note on this that this action will preserve the future land use designation of VLDR for this parcel.
Okay, we can do that. I think it would anyway, but we can do that, I think.
Why would we do that, since we're putting it in on LRO? Am I missing something?
No, just want to...
Is this a PhD kind of question?
No, I just want to send a message that this is, we're not wanting to change the nature of this property other than for this one single use only.
There was a lot of concern expressed by neighbors in the area about that one point. I think Skip's just trying to put their minds at ease that we're not affecting the land use. Of course, we wouldn't anyway, but that's okay. We can do that, we can leave that in.
I see Mr. Peterson is raising his eyebrows.
Comments, John or Debbie, you know one?
Is that going to be a clerk's note?
It's a clerk's note, yeah.
That's what's been recommended to me is the way to handle that. Is there a better way?
Who told you that?
Well, when we amend the comp plan in January next year, I guess we'll cross this bridge, you know, regarding what category it's going to be in.
We have, I think we probably have to do that in January. But I'd just like to make a note right now that for this action, I would like to recommend that it be, you know, retained as VLDR.
Well, it will be until next year when we have to look at it, at the end of next year.
All I'm trying to do is send a message to the people around there that we want to preserve the look and feel of this area to the extent that we can.
Sort of like we do Indian Hills and the findings area. Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, you're troubled with that.
Is there a real problem with leaving that as a clerk's note at this point? Doesn't really change anything.
Not for me.
Doesn't really change anything. I say we leave it in and go on. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of the motion as presented, so that's passed 5-0. Thank you very much. What's next, John?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Moving into land use permits. LUP 34, Tammy Atkinson, requests a land use permit for the purpose of allowing more unrelated adults and more vehicles than the county code permits in Landlaw 116 of the 16th District. Property is located on the east side of High Rock Terrace, north of North Slope Circle. Is the applicant present? That director show the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 34? Please raise your hands.
Do you realize this is the last case?
Leave them up, folks, until we get an accurate count, please.
Let the record show there are 16 people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
So if you're going to make a comment, or you think you might want to make a comment, let's get you sworn in now. If you decide not to later, that's just fine. Okay, thank you, folks, have a seat. Okay, is the applicant here for LUP 34? Come on up.
You've got to play your trumpet.
Were you both sworn in? Let's get that done, too.
What is your PhD in math?
That's fine.
No.
Yeah, it is. It's an operations research.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, give us your name and tell us what you'd like us to know.
My name is Michael Emmison. I'm here to represent Tammy Atkinson. I'm her boyfriend. And basically, the use currently, she has two rentals that occupy the residency in addition to her family. And she's already applied for the permit. She's got a temporary permit, I don't think it's permanent. But she's also planning on selling the house. And she also has a couple of prospect buyers. And so she plans to pretty much leave in the residency within the next, say, three to four months. So the occupants that currently are there, they don't park on the side of the street. They move their vehicles into the driveway area, so there's nothing outside. It's only two people, and that's about it.
You have lots of time left. Anything else you'd like us to know? How many people?
There's no disturbance as far as noise ordinance or... And they'll be moving out, obviously, when she sells that house. And like I said, she has a prospect, and so she'll be leaving the property within three to four months, so.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Okay, well, then we'll call that off. Let's hear from the opposition then. Come on up, and let's hear your testimony.
Just give us your name, please. I'm Paula Robin.
Paula, thank you. Whenever you're ready.
I've been a resident Highland Point neighborhood for over 10 years. We moved here because it's a nice family neighborhood with safe residential streets, nice amenities, and a great place to raise your kids. I've been on the HOA board for four years, and I've been serving as president for the last two years. And we're a large neighborhood with 498 homes. I'm here today with 15 other fellow residents from Highland Point to voice our concern about a land use permit being considered for a house, for the house on High Rock. We've also run a survey with all, because a lot of people were contacting the board, and we've had over 118 people reply, residents who had to provide their name and address, reply to the survey against it. As you will hear from my neighbors, we're all concerned about the safety issues of additional cars, as well as setting a dangerous precedent by allowing a change in land use in the middle of a single-family home neighborhood. We all, including the applicant, moved into this neighborhood with the knowledge that this area was zoned for single-family homes. We ask that you not consider this application for a temporary land use permit. And I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Rick Grant, who has adjoining properties to this one.
Thank you. If you folks want to come up and just stand at the railing, that's fine. You save a little time by doing that. Go ahead, give us your name.
My name's Rick Grant. I own the property to the left and to the right of the subject property. I live in one of, me and my wife, and the other property is rented to our stepdaughter and her family. I'm opposed to this. First of all, I was never notified of this until I went walking out with my dog on about, or the 20th of October, and I saw the sign out there. So I was never formally notified, and I think I was supposed to be. However, saying that, the property is located on a very sharp curve and on an incline. If the people will be parking on the outside, which they have in the past and probably will in the future, because her driveway is pretty hard to get in and out of, and you'd have to valet service to get cars in and out. But anyway, with those cars on the street, there are going to be some of them in my property and some of them on the other property. So I think it's going to be a safety concern, because as people come up that, or up and down that hill, through that curve, if there's cars parked on that street, it creates a problem. But one's not too bad to get around, but when you have two or three of them parked out there, it creates a real problem. And I just don't think that my property would be valued anymore if we turned that into an extended stay property, say the least, okay? Because I just don't think it was designed to have that many non-related people living there. So if you had family, it's another question, but I just don't think it's in our best interest for the subdivision or my two properties adjacent to it to make that property, that land use, approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Emmanuel Casanova, and I have been living in that property. That property is, my property is the one across from the concern property. And my driveway is right there, just opposite, that's where I am. And I have been living in this property for, since 1990. And that's where my children grew up. And I bought that property mainly for, to become a single-family, quiet, and with my privacy. So I'm requesting you folks to oppose the variance request. And based on my experience, even with a single-family house, I've seen most of the time there's a car parked or several cars parked in front of my property. It's very difficult for us to turn, and it's really a safety concern for all of us. Especially if you look at the road itself, I don't know if you folks have been there, that's a heely up, going up the slope. So if I'm going out of my driveway, we are always very concerned on turning if there's a car out there. And also, without the car in front of that particular house concern, it's very, very difficult already because of the visibility of the incoming car. So it's really post-safety measure for those residents who are living in that particular road. So I'm requesting all of you folks to recommend that you oppose the variance request. Thank you.
Thank you, Emmanuel. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lance Rule. I'm a resident of the neighborhood involved. I have a few slides discussing some of the concerns and issues that the neighborhood has with this particular land use variance. Next slide, please. Here are a few bullets with regards to the application. The first two talk specifically to the mechanics of the application itself. The requirement for contiguous properties surrounding the subject property to be notified has not taken place. You've heard testimony from Rick, who has properties on either side. He was unaware of this application. Requirement number 11 in the land use requirements application process requires a public notice of 30 days. The signage did not go up in time outside, it came up late. It's out there now, but it requires now that the neighborhood to move quickly to come in this morning, visit, and talk about some of the problems associated with this application. The variance application for the land use is outside the current standards for the neighborhood and for our 15 residential, single-family homes. The variance application establishes essentially a boarding house or a multifamily dwelling unit consistent with group homes, hotels, et cetera, of great concern to the neighborhood. The application is for six adults and six cars. Six cars won't even fit on the property. It's a two-car garage, and these many vehicles are going to overflow into the public right-of-way, and we have some pictures to underscore that issue. The result of the overflow parking in the public right-of-way creates an extreme safety hazard. If you can go to the next slide for me. We're trying to depict here some of the issues involved. The subject property is on the outside of a turn, relatively steep turn, and a steep grade. This is over a 10, 15% grade at the top of Sweat Mountain. Next slide, please. You can see that there's parking overflow taking place as it is. This is a week later, there's still parking on the street. Even though there is fewer people involved in the residence, there's still issues getting access and egress from the driveway, so they overflow to the street. Next picture. You'll notice in the last picture, the for sale sign indicating the property is on the market. And I've highlighted here the, if you squint carefully there on the three o'clock position on the slide, the blue notice for the subject property application. Very good, thank you. Next slide. All right, so, of concern for us in a single-family residential neighborhood is the precedence that this would set. It's a temporary land use, and it's inconsistent with, you know, the current land use and the other single-family homes in the community. The precedence, albeit for a temporary land use, is of great concern. What is temporary? Is it three months? Is it 24 months? And the precedence it would set for ongoing revisions and additional applications. There's no controls involved in any of the paperwork I've seen with this variance request, all right? There's no controls for requirements, there's no definition of what temporary would be. Code enforcement has already visited the property once in the last 30 or 45 days or so to address certain kinds of issues. So the controls are of great importance to the neighborhood to address the issue of cars, of safety, and to make sure that everything stays within bounds. Finally, this is a revenue-generating opportunity for the owner, okay? We're a single-family residence. It's not a business allowable application. And while some people may rent their homes, this is a multifamily dwelling with unrelated parties generating income for the owner. That's inconsistent land use. Of course, you know, we're concerned about negatively affecting property values and quality of life. Next slide, thank you. In an effort to capture as much information as possible for this hearing, given the limited time we had to prepare, we completed an online survey, a petition, if you will, to check with all the neighborhood residents who are involved in this particular variance.
Lance, you have about a minute, so you need to wrap it up.
Yes, sir. There have been 110 respondents so far over the past couple of days, and the results really indicate a mandate. It's a 100% against this variance. So finally, we would request respectfully that... So finally, we would request respectfully that you deny this particular land use application in your recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have just a small amount of time left. Is there another speaker? Okay, that's, that's good. You guys did great. 22 seconds left. Doesn't usually happen that way. Thank you very much.
Next one.
Yeah, I'll add that to the next speaker. Okay, this is in District 3, that'll be handled by Ms. Trombetti, so she'll lead our discussion on this.
Okay, thank you. Just want to address a couple of things really quickly regarding the notice or not complying with the notice requirements and the definition of temporary before we get into the other I don't know, I guess if letters weren't mailed, or the sign wasn't posted in a timely manner, you know, typically, we would have the option of holding a case if we wanted to, but we don't necessarily have to address those, that's what I thought. We've certainly heard from probably all 110 of the people that participated in the neighborhood survey. We've been receiving emails for weeks, and that's fine. I mean, that's exactly what you're supposed to do, is let us know, you know, what you're thinking about these various issues. So I think notice, you know, although it might have been last minute to some degree, was definitely given. And then temporary, these land use permits are approved for one year at a time, if they're approved. We have the option of going two years, I think is the most we've ever done, and then they have to be renewed on an annual basis. So that is the county's definition of temporary for a land use permit. So back to the issues of land use permit 34, I'm very familiar with Highland Point and the slopes in the neighborhood. I mean, most of the lots and driveways are kind of tricky, the streets are very steep for the most part, and the trade-off is the wonderful views that a lot of the homeowners have from that position on Sweat Mountain. But, but that was one of the first things that I thought of when we started to think about extra cars and people parking in the street, is just how difficult it would be in this particular situation because of the slopes associated and the curves associated with the streets in that neighborhood specifically. I have a question for Ms. Atkinson, if you could come back, or... Yes, so I know the house is for sale, and everybody will be moving if and when the house is sold. Do you have a lease with the people who are renting from you?
It's a month-by-month lease.
Okay.
Yes, and also, as far as the car issue, that's been addressed, and they currently, and there's only four cars total within the household. It's just Tammy and her daughters, and then the two other residents. The two other residents are friends from out of town, actually from out of state, and they have really nowhere to place to go for the moment, and they're currently looking right now, anyway, because they're well aware that the house is for sale. So as far as the car issue, they have a legitimate complaint from before, but we have addressed the issue.
Okay.
So they currently, and everything fits in quite like a puzzle, so, within the driveway.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I had, unless someone else has a question for them.
Questions? Okay, Kristy, go ahead.
As we've handled most of these requests, the impact of additional unrelated people and the cars that come with them are usually what drives complaints from neighbors. So I can't support allowing the additional people or the cars, especially given the topography of the neighborhood and of this site. The reason I ask about the lease is because I understand sometimes people in a legal rental situation needed to be given notice, but if they're on a month-to-month, I think that it might be a little bit easier for you to give them notice that it's time to go ahead and move up their moving plans. So I'm going to make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Commissioners denial of land use permit 34 with the property to come into compliance by December 31st of this year.
Okay. Is that it?
Hold on.
That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion. So that gives you till the end of the year, okay, to bring everything into compliance, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. What else, John?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I thought. Okay, we do have a little bit of, we're through with the zoning cases, we just have a little bit of stuff we need to cover here. We have some minutes given to us for October the 15th and the 26th that we need to review and approve. Any changes to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
We accept both as presented.
Okay, both motions, both sets of minutes have been submitted, second from Gault, all in favor, minutes accepted. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, folks. Good meeting, shortest meeting I've had in seven and a half years.
This is the shortest this year.
Really, it's the shortest one I've ever been in. Go vote, people, don't forget, today's when you vote.